You get no sign though.
Oh, yeah.
Sign don't let me pass them down. So, I just wanna make sure, I won't say the wrong thing.
Sorry about that.
Okay, call them, see what.
So, we have minimum quorum?
We don't have a quorum. We don't, we don't know voting, so we'd be okay. Don't you make a mistake and vote, do you really?
I was just thinking for later, I figured.
We don't get one by six, then.
We're going to the high. Boy, this has been a rough week for me. I can't get parts. Yeah, probably. I got bogs. I can't get parts, less of the part, I can't get contacts, I got bogs on this.
Someone showed me a picture of.
Got two holes in there?
Oh, didn't bother taking it, but it gonna mess us up. Good evening. Wanna make sure everybody here double tap. At this time, we're gonna call the Edgefield County Planning Commission, wet session, to order for May the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Appreciate all of everybody coming here, appreciate you being here. Remember, this is our wet session, so we don't vote, anything of that sort. We have no guest speakers, old business.
Yep, our, uh, old business presenter is unable to be here, uh, at this time, so we're gonna start with new business, and we can circle back to old business.
On our new business, we have rezoning application, residential agriculture development, RD two, PD, which is plan development, Windsor. Product ID one twenty-six, zero 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 five, zero one six, triple R, two nine three, Murrow Road by Windsor Development Group. L F C Mark, Ira, the developer, Ira Holmes, and Jason. Willing up, they're land development manager with Ira Holmes, y'all hear, yeah, I seen. Yeah, are you okay? Come on up to the. John is doing his wet session. I guess, uh, let me review it all. You want to, uh, let's hear from you what you got in mind here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jason Linker with Ira Development. So, there at the entrance to the Windsor subdivision, we've been developing on Murrow Road. It was a one-acre parcel that we were recently able to purchase, and, uh, which is, the parcel is outlined in red. And so, what we are proposing, uh, on this rezoning is to bring that into the Windsor PD development, under that zoning. Uh, and create four lots. Those four lots would be roughly sixty feet wide, which would match all the other those yellow lots coming in, so they'd be the same size. We, uh, we were, the, the PUD was originally approved for four hundred and forty-five lots total. And we have lost some of those lots during, during development, during engineering, you just, you end up, for whatever reason, you don't always get the maximum lots that you have designed for. So, we are right now at about, um, at four hundred and thirty-seven lots is our projected build out, and so adding these four lots into that would still keep us within the original approved, uh, number of lots in, in Windsor. We're not proposing any other changes to the PUD or PD. These lots would fit, um, within all the existing, uh, guidelines and conditions that were approved by that rezoning, uh, a year and a half ago or so.
Now, that road, that's, that road already come out, I was driving, that's a driveway coming into the subdivision right there.
Yes, sir.
Me is right there already, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's all fitting for what's already currently there, so I don't, do you have any suggestions? Kevin, Doc, anything at all?
Um, we do not, uh, as he pointed out, there would be below the total of lots they were approved for originally. There's a derelict mobile home on the property currently that they'd be removing, uh, to subdivide this property. Under its current zoning, uh, the minimum lot size is twelve thousand square feet, um, and since it's less than ten lots, they could do it as a minor subdivision, if not done as part of the PD. So, this is basically just to bring it into the fold of the PD development.
There's, uh, there's two entrances into the subdivision?
There, there will be.
Okay, I guess, um, it's all water under the bridge by now, right? It's all.
Yeah, right.
You don't see any reason to widen that road right there to provide for more ingress, egress room?
We did traffic study as part of the, um, the, um, rezoning and, uh, the initial engineering of phase one, and, uh, submitted that to DOT. And, um, we were required to basically have a, a left and right turn out lane from within Windsor, but we're not required to do any improvements onto Murrow Road.
Okay, so what does that, what does that look like at the, like, if I'm stopped?
So, if you're stopped, you can, you can either turn left, or then somebody can pull up next to you and turn right, so there's two lanes going out.
Okay, at both?
We haven't, we haven't, uh, designed the second entrance on five knots yet, so I don't know how that's gonna shake out yet.
So, that's like pending approval from DOT?
Well, that'll, I mean, we'll have to submit it, we'll have to do a traffic study there, whenever we design that phase, and then they'll tell us what we have to do.
Okay. So, that's Murrow Road?
Correct, up top, yes, sir.
And, uh, those lots are contiguous with your, with the existing subdivision?
You know, I don't know already, then, I don't see a problem with it, really.
I have no other comments, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks, Jason, thanks.
Next, we have land development application, State Coach Station, Storage. Product ID one six-two double R, double R, one sixteen triple R, Edgefield Road by Blue Sky. Variety and Investment, Davis, Stuart, Thompson. Are you here? Come on up, they're developing with Blue Sky. And they, they're gonna join us doing this, we know this one here, uh. Excuse me. So, you are proposing a five thousand seven sixty, retail building, eight storage building, the very side between them. Nine thousand three hundred square feet. One thousand eight hundred seventy-five square feet, total for forty-two, thousand eight hundred twenty-five square feet. RV parking and so forth, U-Haul. I think it's only the district that permitted here. The underground stormwater detention center, we just got that from them.
We may not have, but.
But that what you plan to?
Yeah, we're gonna do an underground, uh, we're gonna pretty much make, uh, a storage area a gravel, so we can, you know, so we don't have runoff. And then we'll have a, a underground, uh, detention system. And if you're not familiar with them, uh, the Wendy's at Exit Five has one. Um, if you're familiar with the new fire station going in on Martin Town Road in North Augusta, they're gonna build the fire station on top of it.
Dave, put the microphone a little closer, please.
So, that's what we plan to use to, to help keep the area around, you know, more environmental pleasing, you know.
Uh, what, what depth of the old's gonna be, you know, your depth, any ground coverage on your, uh?
That has not been engineered, but it will be engineered, you know, follow all.
Talking about the depth of the pond?
Yeah, I mean, the depth, you know, you got, you got your, your landscape cover over the top of it, right?
Yeah, I'm, we're not a hundred percent, we don't know yet.
Cause you know, uh, I'm familiar with them in, uh, you know, two stormwater waste, they've been keeping up to date on them. And they, they did, when I was looking at it, had a concrete, you know, concrete barriers under that support, all the weight on top, I think they here was six feet covering over them. And like you say, some of that bill, billing on the top of it.
We will, uh, Scott Johnson with Civil Designs, he will handle all that, and we will follow all regulations that are required, of course.
Couple questions I have, um, the site plan, the current site plan really doesn't show any fencing, uh, is it planned for this facility to be fenced?
Yes, absolutely.
Screen?
Uh, it's, uh, it was on one of them, I guess it didn't get transferred to this. But it's a fence right around the landscape buffer, just on the storage side of it, the landscape buffer would be on the outside of the fence.
What about lighting? What kind of lighting it's gonna be, is it gonna be something that's simple on the buildings, or you're gonna have site lighting that kind of?
Eventually, we'd like to have the lighting all on the buildings, but we may not build every building at the same time. So, our plan would be to have some directional lighting, specifically in the RV area where there aren't any buildings, we may have to put a pole up. But we were, what our hopes are is to maybe put motion lighting there, so it's not constantly on.
We will follow the, uh, ordinance that's spelled out, y'all's ordinance, y'all have an ordinance on it, we will follow that. And ba- basically, in a nutshell, all lighting has to be directed into the property, not out, and certain types of lights have to be used to keep it from overflowing into the neighborhood, or the neighbors. But like Stuart said, we're really looking at some low stuff at the buildings on motion, so it, you know, it's not on all night. That's for the storage area.
What are the plans for your shop up, up front, what is that planned?
Building up front's gonna, um, house, um, there, that's what.
That pitch of it, I guess.
What it'd look like. The left-hand side, um, is gonna be about, I think, four thousand, forty-four, forty-five hundred square foot. That's gonna be the commercial office, Greystone Construction, we're moving our office out of Aiken County into Edgefield County. Then, right now, next to that, we may, we don't have a contract yet, have a real estate agent coming, company coming in. And then the last parcel is not, no, we don't have any commitments on it, but it will be, you know, it's, it will be consistent with what we do.
Kevin, tell me about, it's not currently zoned, but it's in the overlay, is that what, what am I looking at on the?
I believe the front four hundred feet of the property is zoned, general development, and everything behind that is unzoned.
Is unzoned. Looks like it's about the back third of the property is basically unzoned. As general development is what it's, that blue is, general development's what it is. Well, the questions I would have, just kind of based off of it, I know that, you know, looking at the aerial, you know, the back part of the property, you have a residence on the other side of you. On both sides of you, actually.
Right.
You know, um.
You don't have above.
Highway twenty-five, you know, it, it's like a leapfrog effect, you have, you know, residents, the business, the business, the resident, I mean, it's just one thing after the other. All I would ask is that, obviously, you know, from what we can tell you comply, but, you know, I would really just, for your landscape buffers and your lighting and noise. You know, I don't know, I guess you would have some sort of a gate, you know, coming in for people if they're gonna store the stuff there, cameras, that kind of stuff. It's just really about being a good neighbor, you know, to those around.
We sent letters out to the five adjoining neighbors, except the Copperfield subdivision. Um, we got, uh, comments back from two, and we actually met one, Mr. Ross, and he's here tonight, um, and we spoke with him. The other one was per email, we, we addressed all his comments, and invited him to the meeting, and I don't know what he looks like, so he could be here. The, we have a tier-two landscape buffer, our own design, which is per y'all's ordinance, and we will follow that, there's no problems there. And it's tier-one up front, um, we're gonna keep the lighting to, you know, as low as possible. And, uh, noise-wise, of course, we can't control someone coming in, you know, and, and unloading their stuff in the storage facility, they're making noise. Other than that, our construction company, we're, we're not a, a heavy equipment company, so we're not gonna have equipment in there making noise and all that. So, I don't think noise is a huge issue, but we will consider for, by all means. And hopefully, the natural, um, landscaping that is there on each side already, we don't wanna touch it.
We can substitute it, and as our buffer, I think it's heavier.
It's much thicker.
It's denser than what the tier-two requires, and after talking to Mr. Ross, he would be in agreement to try to keep that, if at all possible.
And the, um, with the landscaping, with the way we're gonna do the water, it's a natural drain, we already have a natural drain, we have sewer on this property. So, you know, those kind of things don't, are, are not an issue. We, we also, um, the design of our storage buildings, okay, are not what you see down the road on the right. Uh, what, you know, those, uh, containers, uh, they're in a hole down there on the right. If you're familiar, the one that's I'm most familiar with is Castle on Sweetwater Road, that type storage building, that height. Now, Mr. Ross gave us a, a very, uh, interesting request, and I, we, we think we're gonna be able to follow it. He said, make them hunter green, green, so if we make them green, then they will blend even more. So, that's the concept we have, and, and, um, I believe we pretty much met, or we've met anything in the ordinance as required. And, of course, if y'all have any suggestions, we surely will entertain them.
Is it a facility that's gonna be, uh, open twenty-four hours?
It will be, uh, a gate that, yes, someone could come in twenty-four hours, they'll have a code and come on in. That's why we are highly considering the motion light.
Did the five hundred-foot variance for commercial change on Edgefield Road?
What do you mean by the five hundred-foot variance?
I think there's, uh, like, at some time, there's, um, you know, it had to be, I guess, within five hundred feet, so that.
You're, you're referring to the four hundred-foot overlay?
Yeah, no, I, um, no, I know about that, but was there?
It's about setback, what you trying to say, setback?
There's not a five hundred-foot setback. There might be one for, uh, commercial structures over, what is it, forty thousand square feet?
Yeah.
I think it's, yeah.
The entrance, you gotta decide what the entrance is gonna be, still waiting on DOT for that?
Uh, the entrance will be on Highway twenty-five.
I know that, what I'm saying before, is the lot concerned.
We don't have specifics from South Carolina DOT yet, if they're gonna require turn lanes or that sort of thing.
Cause see, I, I was just looking, uh, I know the way you got, it can be in the center, but I'd like it to have it off enough, you know, from the side that you probably got a buffer, you know, to your right and left.
I think we're, we're approximately, uh, sixty-five.
Somewhere near that long, your, your long building across the front, they don't want those sides, and that's another, I'm trying to see what.
This is ninety, this is ninety-nine, ninety-six. We're, we're probably about sixty, at least, off that left property.
Right, okay.
I think sixty.
That way, we'd be running, you know, right down the side, whatever you're looking at, right? That'll hit, cut out on some of you, in truth.
We, of course, we have to get encroachment permits through the DOT, and they're gonna basically tell us that we have to.
Right, I understand that, okay. You can come in from, uh?
Kevin, on the front property line, there's, looks like there's a, kind of a small setback on the property line, if you, I'm looking at the actual, you know, the meeting itself.
Yes, there is an intention there, and if you do go, if you ever have time, go down, just pull up y'all's G S S or the G S, G I S, and look, they're all up and down on both sides, there's a handful of them. So, prior to coming to the meeting, this was a few weeks ago, I called S C D O T, which the representative now is out of Saluda, uh, for Edgefield County, and had a conversation. And he had no idea why that was there, and they were supposed to come over and pull all, like, do a, a title search to see why it was there, and they couldn't find anything, but it's there. So, the only thing that we could come up with, me and, uh, the guy at S, S C D O T, was that maybe at one time there was some drainage or something that they thought they might need, and so that's where, that's why it's there. There's one approximately, I'd say, hundred, hundred fifty yards down on the opposite side of the road.
The building that'll go up front, um, is this proposed to be a pre-engineered building itself, and just kind of built out, and I guess, uh, wh- wh- would, would you foresee that building being built up, I guess?
Uh, yeah, probably just a pre-engineered concrete block, uh, K-joists, single slope. Built out to tenant detail.
Different materials, look to be stucco, brick, maybe a little bit of split face or something like that?
I was thinking of split face, sides and rear, and the front would be a combination of stucco, brick, maybe some stone. The front would all be brick, stone, or stucco, more of a finish.
I guess signage would also include three or four different?
If, we would have enough room on the sign for four different businesses, I guess, cause there would theoretically be four units, tenant spaces. But currently, two of the tenant spaces will be rented to the same company.
And we would, we would, on the signage, we definitely would follow the ordinance, but you could imagine just having a, you know, a nominal height, some strip, nothing dis-sorted eyes.
What, um, uh, what's your square footage under the roof?
Under the roof, total with all the buildings, or?
Yeah, and then, I guess, your office space up there.
The office space is, uh, fifty-seven sixty.
Um, it's close to forty, around the forty thousand of storage, and then we have some RV storage in it, so.
Yeah, I guess that's those long sheds?
No, the actual RV is all the way to the rear.
Oh, in the open, okay.
The little parking is in the open, we, at this time, we don't have plans to put a cover on that.
Forty-two thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would just, you know, again, take notice of, I know your landscape buffer, your fencing, everything else, you're, you're, you're kind of getting inserted in between two residences, so, you know.
Right.
Be a kind neighbor, be able to do what you can with that.
We actually have it drawn here already, and, uh, we will follow the tier-two on the sides and rear, and the tier-one on the front. And I, it is to my opinion now, that it's already there and more, because the, the sides have not been cut.
Thank you.
And, and like you said, the, the ordinance is, is clear, um, and we will, you know, when we come back in with the final drawings, all the infrastructure and everything, it will be written on there, what we will do, and it will follow your ordinance and any of y'all's requests tonight.
Any other comments from staff at all?
No, sir.
Do you have any to come in on that storage right there? Okay, thanks, sir, appreciate it. All right, let's see, we move along. I'm trying to lose my voice for some reason, what's going on? Next, we have, uh, prospective land development applications, senior living facility, product ID one forty-five fourteen, double R, zero five, zero, triple R, Community Road by Randar Key, Deborah, that, turn, turn, the pro- how you pronounce that? Uh, project P E with, uh, Darren Engineering here to join, that's you and Kira, okay? This is wet session, so you want to, uh, let's hear from you what you got in mind here, ma'am.
Okay, so, we've got a property here, this is Rand, Randy Key, um, Key Properties, and I'm Debbie Tumler with Drone Engineering. And over on Community Road, we've got five point seven acres.
Deb, can I get you to bring the microphone closer?
We've got five point seven acres, um, that is split by a Santee Cooper easement, that's a hundred and fifty foot wide. And we wanna put thirty, um, duplex units on it with, um, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartment units that are, uh, eight hundred and twenty square feet and six hundred and thirty square feet. And the total building, uh, slab would be fourteen hundred forty-nine square feet. We may end up, uh, pairing up some two bedrooms together, but at this point, we've got them all one-bedroom, two-bedroom duplexes. And we, we oriented this, uh, with kind of a neo-traditional style, so that there is, um, and a courtyard area for people to congregate and walk and do passive things out their front doors. We've got room for, uh, drainage down on the north corner of the property, which is the low end, and we're using a type-two buffer on the back because it bets up against some residential, uh, I believe it's unzoned property. And the front will be a type-one buffer. We've got twenty-four foot wide drive aisles with parking spaces, um, for two, we're, we're working with, um, two parking spaces per unit, so we'll have plenty of parking. We've got connectivity between the, the north and the south pods, uh, for walking, and two entrances off of Community Road to give good circulation. Um, we've shown a mail kiosk for everybody to go grab their mail at one key location. And we haven't spoken with DOT at this point, but we have run the site plan by Santee Cooper, and they're happy with the way we laid out the roadways across their easement.
Uh, let me see, I'm trying to, Community Road going up through that, is it ditched there or is it flat? I'm trying to place it in my mind. I'm trying, you know, the road itself, is it ditched on these parts?
Yes, it did.
Yeah, there's, you can see on the topographic information, there's a channel down the side of it.
I was trying to picture that, I've been on that recently, I was trying to picture, uh, in my mind, had.
And I don't believe there's any site distance issues from either the intersections either.
You have a comment from staff?
No, sir.
I guess, uh, is there, you know, just the public's, uh, information, uh, the medical services, et cetera. So, these are gonna be like homes, is it gonna be like the vintage gardens area, you know where I'm talking about?
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Well, they got, they have, actually have the nurses come in and it's like a facility that, we, we typically didn't wanna go that way, but, I mean, if it's, if it's required, we'll, but we're basically fifty-five and older, fifty-five and older.
So, they just wanted to have rentals at this stage of the game for, uh, fifty-five and older?
Okay, so.
Oh, yes, it's not a medical facility, just.
Right, it's not ambulatory.
If I may, Chairman, this would be a commercial rental senior living facility, not a medical or treatment facility.
Basically, kind of duplexes with age requirements.
Now, we, I know we have water there, what is sewer there, is it lift station, uh, your sewage, how your sewage, have you looked into that?
Well, right now, we're considering septic, um, that will have its challenges, but we still are searching for the closest, um, sewer main. And we've been working with the local sewer agency, and I wish, not quite sure where the actual sewer main ends, but it doesn't come by this property.
Yes, ma'am, I think, I think, I think that fourth main goes down, even down on twenty-five out there, right, the fourth main, so that means if, if you went sewer, you had to have a lift station, then you gotta have a, you gotta have a right of way to get to it, so.
I, I think our main problem was the elevation from the, from the bottom part of the,
Well, see, well, you, you know, it's four sewers, so that wouldn't have any impact on whether or not, see, with four sewer, you would have to have a, a lift station that pumps back to the fourth main, if, you know, the sewer, they were allowed, and then, uh, to get there, you have to have a right of way, easement to get to it, and so, yes, right.
But there's not local sewer mains in the area.
Question I have is, so, you've got some, these are duplexes, and looking at the layout, it typically, if this type of product, you know, um, typically wanna look for something that's fairly flat land. And when I look at the topography, you've got, on the top end of the property, it's at five sixty-five, and at the low end of the property, you know, you're pushing five twenty-five, you've got about forty foot of fall across this, so, and I, I don't know, are they, are they, I guess, looking at them, how, how are you, how are you gonna deal with them, it's a, it's a senior, you know, facility, and you've got sidewalks everywhere, you know, you could start on the top end and not end to get all the way to the bottom of the hill. So, I'm just asking about, what, what's your grading plan, or what do you, what's your plans for the topography of the property?
It has to be mass graded, and what we would be considering is about a five percent grade change through the drive aisles as it goes from south to north. And, um, then we'd be stepping the units down that five percent slope, so, um, to get to the bottom of the hill as it turns on the north end of the property, towards the basin.
So, the topography shown on here is, is final.
Is existing grade.
Oh, is it's existing?
Yeah, yeah.
Looks pretty, pretty sufficient.
It, it flattens out a little bit over, um, through units eight through ten, and, yeah, there'll be some grading necessary.
Does the transmission company, the, I guess, who's Santee Cooper, you said that's who it is? They allow you to go in and grade underneath their power line and do some work there, or what's, what's the requirement for grading, I guess, underneath their, their, um, easement?
Um, typically, the power companies with transmission lines, they don't like to see any very much fill, but, um, so, likely, we're gonna try to match existing through their easement as much as possible with the roadway center line, and then, um, grade out from there. So, we'll be cutting to a subgrade and probably transitioning through the curves as you come around by, uh, Unit seven A and Unit thirteen B.
Looks like you gotta pole right in the middle of your lot. Well, and the other question too, so how many of these are you anticipating, or is it by the housing, I guess, requirements for handicap? So, I mean, cause you've got a certain requirement on a grade percentage that you have to deal with for handicap, for access getting into some of these buildings too. I'm, I think if you were to take the topo away, you would think, you know, it's a, you know, a nice layout, it's just, it's pretty aggressive, given the topography that's on the property.
Yeah, we would be working toward trying to meet five percent maximum slope, so that we don't have any, have to have any handrails. So, in some places, we may have to have some, um, landings and, um, ramp to make transitions. But the intent would be to have a relatively flat area in that interior corridor. Maybe three, four percent at maximum, and, um, come up to the front doors, so that we can meet accessibility requirements. And then we, we also intend to have a back door into each of the units, so that from the parking, they can get straight into the units.
Looks like about a thirty-foot drop in five hundred and twenty feet, something like that.
Which, which we ran at about five to six percent slope.
Yeah, on average.
And, and that's existing, we can do some cutting and then make some grade changes between the transmission line.
Yeah, stay away from the pole, kind of.
Right, yeah, get everything into cut and, and maybe we can do a little bit of filling up at the nor- or south end of the site, because we have to cut out for the pond at the bottom of the hill. So, we'll just move that dirt over to the uphill side and pat it out.
You have it down as well? Thought you had them all. Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, I actually did. Is it governed by some sort of a common covenants or anything? Is it, when you, is, is for rental, correct? So, is it, I guess it doesn't matter, if it was, if it was for sale, you know, it would be different, so it, it is.
Yeah, it's for rent, so they'll have, the owners will have a property, they'll manage the property.
One, one, one final question, have, uh, have you, uh, discussed it with the neighborhood there, and with anybody else?
That was another thing too, I didn't know if we had to give out some.
No, you know, I didn't know sometime anything. I didn't, you know, I just wanted, you know.
But the community is, 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 is an older community with the land, it's been purchased, all the, it, it couldn't be nothing else but a senior.
Okay, we thank you. I hadn't had a chance to look at it, cause it came up last minute, and, uh, I had been on Community Road for a little while, I know some people around there that ride around and look, you know, but.
So, any, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Any health, any healthcare services that would be provided are solely, uh, purchased or commissioned by the residents themselves? There's no like healthcare provider that's on site, these are apartments, duplexes, and, uh, they just have a minimum age requirement. Okay.
Okay, I think that's it, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, if there are more comments from anybody, it's look like that is, uh,
Back to old business.
Old, oh, oh, yeah, okay, I forgot about it, we gotta go to old business now, cause since he wasn't here, is, uh, Philip Green. Oh, that's you, how you doing, sir?
Yeah, Philip couldn't make it tonight.
Oh, okay. Subdivision application for hollow oak, product ID one seventy-six, zero, 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 one, zero, one, eight, triple out, Sunnybrook Road and Sable Lane by JSMG Development, LSC gave it, I can't pronounce that, man, how you pronounce it? Development with JSMG Development and Philip Green, Project PE, he's not here with us, uh, John, so you wanna bring us up to date on where we staying? I think, uh, the last time we was here, we talked about. I'm not, I'm not, uh, getting into that one, see.
There was some, there was a couple of recommendations made, so we changed the layout, added acreage lots, and added a, um, a fifty-foot natural buffer back on the roadside coming up the dirt road, I believe it's Sable Lane, come around the backside there, and adjusted the way the road sat here in the front.
Good question, Kevin, who enforces buffers? Like, say if we have a buffer and all the trees get cut down and all the grass is gone and all that, who?
Yeah, code, through code, code enforcement.
What I, what I saw in the plan was, it looked like we would be enforcing eleven separate lots.
You would not be enforcing, so when I, when, inside the HOA, when the, and it is gonna be on each, each lot here, it is restricted to take out anything in this fifty foot, it's a natural buffer, so whatever's sitting there now stays, it's not gonna be a landscape buffer.
So, um, I just wanted to make sure, uh, so I guess in the covenants for those lots, and I guess we'd probably need to copy those covenants before we vote on.
Anytime a, anytime a covenant, no, any, we can't require a covenant, anytime a, it's a civil contract. It'd be recorded at the county courthouse when activated.
Right.
We can just make sure a buffer stays there.
Correct.
Okay, so that property back there, I guess you'd allow your residents, I, I guess that eleven lots, I forget, anyway, um, you'd allow your residents to basically occupy, quote, in their yard, or build a fence on the other side of that, that buffer, but you would require them to keep it?
Correct.
So, if like a lot didn't do that, then.
So, there's, there's, there's two operating, uh, factors. The planning commission approving it with understanding that that buffer will be there creates basically a requirement that the property owner maintain it on the county's end, and if they were to remove it, they would have to replant it. Simultaneously, because it's part of their covenants, there's a civil contract that when they buy the lot, they're agreeing to maintain it, and if they didn't, the HOA could take them through legal suit to remedy it.
So, we would have an agreement that they would have an agreement?
No, these are two, two separate operating things performing the same function, so there'd be two means by which to enforce it.
No, I see where you increase the lot sizes, again, it doesn't, you know, it just increased the land ownership piece on it more than really providing any additional buildable space or where the septic would actually go on at least one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, or thirteen of the lots.
Uh, re- rephrase what you said again.
Well, the request was, you know, to go to one acre lots, but what effectively was done on the lots that are kind of on the upper corner of their, basically the lot line, which is simply extended to get a one acre lot, but it.
I've lost lots doing this.
I understand that, but what I'm telling you is that these, those lots were basically extended and, and, uh, cause they were the same, were they not the same width prior to?
I'd have to go back and check, but I do not believe so, cause I lost lots coming down the side right here, even though that they were, even though they were extended, they were, the widths are, were wider, and obviously that would compensate for the septic systems and give it a larger area of coverage that was requested there in the last meeting.
Have you been able to get any, uh, read on the hydrology of the site, whether or not from DHEC or anybody else about the availability of water and things like that? Have you had any studies done yet?
Yes, my engineers started doing the studies on it right now, um, we're positive, but we haven't finalized it, so I can't give you a final answer. Also, um, DHEC won't look at these until after it goes through the county's process, basically, it's a time factor for them, honestly.
What kind of studies you said you're in?
Engineer started the hydrology study, he has a separate firm that's private with him, they both looked at this and felt positive when they sent it over to DHEC, we're not gonna have any issues, plus through stormwater and where they have everything laid out. That was their concern, so yes.
Commissioners, we have the previous plan available, if you'd like to see it up on the screen.
You'll pull that up. What was the lot count on our side of the line, Kevin Pryor?
The previous total number was seventy-nine, with forty-two in or mostly in Edgefield County.
Lot count now at seventy-five. I'd like to go over some numbers, um, and of course, I'm, you probably know I'm not a fan of all this in one area, especially when there's no, um, existing utilities, et cetera. What I did was, in fact, here, I go on the GIS, and, uh, there's two, there's one. Yeah, sure. Um, now, mind you, the lots that I clicked on were not contiguous, and I don't know if everybody else, can you get a good picture of that in your mind before I set it down? Um, the yellow is other lots that I clicked, seventy-nine of them, uh, in the red is the subdivision, which would hold seventy-nine lots. Um, the numbers that I came up with, and I clicked on all lots that were similar size, there's some in there that are similar I didn't click on, but if you'd make a wrong move on the screen, the whole thing goes away. Kevin's laughing, so, yeah, the outer border is bigger than it should be, but whatever's in yellow is what I'm talking about. So, seventy-nine lots out there of similar size in the wild and the neighborhood. Um, when you only take the first half in consideration, them being the smallest numbers, the average lot size out there is three point three eight acres. When you go down and you consider all seventy-nine lots, um, the total acreage covered is not, what are we looking at, seven eighty-nine?
What, number of lots?
No, the acreage for the subdivision.
So, the total acreage for the subdivision is?
Eighty-six, eighty-six point seven, yeah, and outside for seventy-nine is not eighty-six seven, but five hundred thirty-one acres. Um, so that's seventy-nine possible homes on five hundred and thirty-one acres versus eighty-six point seven. These, on that five hundred and thirty-one acres, you have, you know, you could have seventy-nine wells. Now, we're looking at seventy-nine wells within eighty-six, uh, acres. Um, if you were to take that density and apply it to the acreage out there, you wouldn't have seventy-nine homes, you'd have four hundred and eighty-four homes if you applied that standard to the outside lots I'm talking about. And, um, you know, while I'm told, you know, this is probably gonna happen, um, I just want, uh, everybody to understand that I am mindful of it. I'm sure the rest of the commission is mindful of it, but I think it's destructive to the compet- to the county to, uh, do water and sewer in such a small area. It's six times the density, six point seven times the density. to, uh, do water and sewer in such a small area. It's six times the density, six point seven times the density, um, of the surrounding area. And, uh, the words I use, this is not in harmony. Uh, draining aquifer at six times or more the present rate. And these people moving these subdivisions are not, are just going to drink the water and take showers. They're going to, they're moving a subdivision, y'all. They're going to be competing for green grass. They're going to water their grass out of the same aquifer. So, uh, when I say six times the draw, um, it's very hugely conservative, probably irresponsible of me to make that assumption. Um, that's not in harmony either with the local area. So, anyway, if, uh, if I'm going down on the ship, I want to know how big the hole is. But, uh, I, I personally, for the future and these rent, these kitchen-table discussions we're going to have, and for, uh, what we're going to be doing regarding LMO, uh, ordinances, uh, the comprehensive plan, uh, we need to consider protecting these areas because that red dot is not harmonious whatsoever with the yellow. So... I'll remain on my high horse, but I'm done talking. Thank you.
Your comment, comment is respected.
Yes, sir.
We'll, we understand it. Um, growth is coming. People need houses to live in, and I, and I do understand that. If the houses, if for some reason when DHEC comes in and does their study and they don't work, we give the lot to someone else, lots get larger, and we go from there, so...
Yeah, I, I, and respectfully back, I, uh, I think that anywhere that has this density of, uh, housing should be connected to utilities, i.e. at least water. Um, you know, drainfields, and I guess, you know, if they pollute the water table underneath, uh, they're eighty-nine, eighty-seven acres, whatever it is, and they're on water, so they don't have to drink it again, then, um, you know, the ecosystem underneath can be whatever, but at least they'd have water, you know? Um, I, you know, I'd, I'd like to see a study, and I would formally request, um, you know, a study of how this would affect the existing residents as well as the residents that come in and don't understand what they're buying. So, that stands.
I say so.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, I, I've gone through this quite a lot in the last week. After preliminary plat approval, which is just to say this is a legal use of the land, they still have to go through DHEC, they still have to go through all of their other approvals. You, as a planning commissioner, can come into my office and get a copy of their study. It is, and it is a public record as well, so, you know, if you want to see the schwepp that's approved, if you want to see the DHEC approvals, all of those documents are stored in perpetuity in our office on our system.
Next week, I'd like you to take me all through that.
No, that does not start until after preliminary approval. Not, nobody spends hundreds of thousands of dollars on engineering when they don't even know if it's legal yet or not. So, you have your preliminary, then you have your engineering. Then, once all that's approved and infrastructure's in, they do a final, and that's where you have the actual subdivision of land occur.
Not, I heard what he said, we have to approve it first, but I want to know what the whole process is. Apparently, I, I'm lacking, but what I do know, uh, as a prior leader on council for eight years and being on planning commission now, I want to protect, if I'm being selfish myself, but I also want to protect my neighbors and, and also residents, um, of the county. And I, I, I understand, I don't think the, I just don't think the, don't mean to talk to you guys, I don't think that, uh, the, the, the DHEC process, it's like they take it out of our hands. It's our county, man, and, and, um, it's, it's our water. It's, uh, it's a underground river. Then, it's our resources, the county, you know, and I realize every property has mineral rights to it, but, you know, I think we, as a county, should be able to protect that outside of DHEC purview. So, that's not a change we can make, but that's a change that has to be, what, what, federal, state, so...
Okay, uh...
Sorry to...
No problem, I, I'm, we stopping it right here, uh, you know, so, uh, we appreciate it, you know? This is our last item we have on our list here, so at this time, we're going to, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the wet session. And we're back at six.
Of motion?
Second. Motion to second, that we adjourn from the wet session, we begin back at eighteen hundred hours, about nine minutes. How you doing, sir?
I want to ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You know, during talking about this in the, uh, in the, uh, certain, uh, way, uh, uh,
Right.
And, you know, in the future, who's going to be my, uh, uh?
I would think the county could. We're going to sit up here and approve it. Well, I don't know, I, see, there, there I said again, it's out of our hands too, because DHEC approves this stuff.
The, the homeowner, I tell you right now, the homeowner, DHEC doesn't...
HOA?
Uh? No, the, uh, the, the, DHEC does not, DHEC does not take any responsibility for septic system, if they work or they don't work. And, and the well the same way, and, and it been that way, I fought it, fought it, fought it.
Drop out another, um, two hundred feet.
Look at this.
Cause look, these ain't going to...
You can't fall on home, which is not fair, but it is.
I'll be going against it. Okay, well, thank you.
Well, you probably, but you can't see, you can't sue the state. The state, the state, you know, our, D, oh, DHEC have a clause that they do not, when they approve a septic tank, it's yours. They do not guarantee that the oper- the drain field will operate or not, once they check it out.
You can have that, I know it's a small, but, these are all, and I've got friends that are in these numbers, these are all, the, the seventy-nine, I don't know what lots. It's in the picture, here, take that too. But, uh, these are my comments that I made, and there's some numbers down there, so...
I know it. I, I know it. It, it's a, it's a system that, I don't know what the answer to, and it, it have it all over the United States. If that well go dry, you got to dry well, and I have people, you got to dry well, you gonna have to dig your lung and try to get, you know, you're part of the department, that's what you can do. It's like, I got people that sewer system where the drain line failing there, but see, DHEC not responsible. It's yours.
I done had to drop my well.
You gotta drop yours.
I had did it, uh, two years ago.
Did that, see, some guy, he can't drop the well, they're thin on the well, some of them he can't drop it.
I had to go an extra, uh, two hundred feet.
Yes, sir, good to meet you. Oh, is it Rodney?
I well it four hundred and then I'm a...
Good guy, good guy, here. Here's a couple more if you want.
We got well down the car, here's five feet deep.
I'm on, I'm on rock, I'm down there in the, um, rock river area, in the minor, on the granite rock. Yeah, so after they came, and they been over there working, I had to drop my well, uh, extra two hundred feet.
Like I said, a homeowner has to take that, you can say it, that's the way it is.
I was fine till they started working over there.
He's making me nervous, and I knew the answer. I'm like, oh, crap.
Now, now, if they did that, then you could have a, you know, like, you have a, something even going like that.
Sorry for ignoring you.
It, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't kick, but, uh, I run that problem all the time. People call me and they go and check it out.
Good luck, thank you.
And I, if I run, I run a test on well water, run it, DHEC come out and say you can't drink it, which you can use and all, I, I just got two ideas last week.
Are there any restrictions on your county, where are your plans, your previous plan?
For what?
Instead of limits, ain't it?
It, uh, in your, in it, well, your city limits don't allow them at all. Trent, not Ed Field, not John. I think John got the mobile part, but Ed Field, that's...
Didn't make another recommendation, I think. Daring that sex in the last, how's that?
It, it's some restriction, but it's not a whole lot of, you know.
Yeah, there's some on the other side of the...
Right, right, right.
Oh, um...
Yeah, there, how many you can put, as far as you want, you would have to be a problem.
No, speaking.
If you got, if you're in, unless it's in a subdivision, it got to cover.
Think there's a public...
You know, subdivision, then you understand that, but otherwise, there's no restriction.
Okay, no.
So, you know, when, uh, when the new folks come up with, you know, we're taking, uh, some...
No, new business executive session, which is none comments by the chair, adjourned.
We passed up on the county. Right, they do, they want, they elect, and we just appointed, cause they, if, uh, cause if, uh, if the, uh, the commission that appointed us, if you just satisfy what we've been doing, they can get rid of us, they go, you know?
Well, it's two different offices.
I don't try to satisfy them, I try to use, you know, when I think my opinion, then we got state laws, for example, like this right here. We really can't stop them, but we kind of made it hard for them to come. What they left up to me, I say, if you don't have an acre, you wouldn't do nothing, and part of it. Except, except for sure, no.
Yeah, hold on a sec. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out where it is in here.
Oh, some of it changed, but it still didn't go up to no acre lot, cause they, you know, they, they money wire, they don't want to lose land.
No.
Know what I'm saying, you know, you know?
Email it to me.
See, I was going to do it, been for a year, but I never, but I never, I know it, she'd apply with seven, five, eight dollars for a three quarter, she'd apply with that.
I understand.
Electric wire, my electric wire went, they went from seven dollars to a hundred and thirty dollars with this, a month.
Thank God.
I see the contract, the, the cord can let you use fourteen too, the dead room and all, but I've been out here six, five years, and I never used it. I wa- I like twelve. I've ever sold, use a fourteen, and that's just, you know, like, third, like, uh, I'm, I'm, I weigh up mine a grade and protect the homeowner. Everybody don't do that, cause they live at a dollar, but, the few dollars, the few dollars not going to make me rich.
No, I appreciate, cause it was just so much information.
The few dollars not going to make me rich.
Twenty-nine, it was thirty.
I try to save the reasons, everybody doesn't do that.
I don't know how these people, uh, that somebody said, what, what's going on?
I think it's something.
Yeah, so...
I don't know what's...
Yeah, so, yeah, forty notes.
I know, now, it's only been a month, but they grieving.
No, well, maybe today, today, cause I got it yesterday, forty-eight pages.
When man, when, when say the ruler, the ruler money, the ruler all evil. That's not right.
So, I mean, like, I couldn't, I couldn't, there's no way, cause there's a lot of information they go over, and I couldn't do it.
Well, they couldn't, but they kind of, it woke up. And I read about, so, what's that, you know? Right.
Hey, Frank, tell them that.
And what, what's the incentive if they're giving away?
There's monitoring.
There's some kind of monetary, uh, tax on the city.
Not, not on relevant. No, it shouldn't be.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, it's three minute, it's three minutes after.
Where your client? Yeah, really? That's order, order, I think it.
Don't end the stream, just get the recordings.
Yo, Kevin. At this time, we're going to call our meeting to order for May thirteenth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, for the Ed Field County Planning Commission, you know, eighteen oh one. Uh, we're going to call it to order, we, if anyone come to order with our regular meeting, we'll have our invocation. Heavenly Father, we pause here to thank you for, once again, allowing us to gather here, just, here to, uh, consider county matters, dear God, concerning planning. We ask you to just guide us in the decisions that we make, but we do it fair, and Father, that we keep all parties in mind, and we hope that you'll plead with what we do in the decisions that we make, and we ask you to guide us and protect us, that all will go well. We thank you for this county, for the people of this county, and you bless all of them, and for me that we live well. Blessed and keeping in Jesus' name, we pray, amen. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, just for all.
At this time, uh, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda for May thirteenth, which is tonight. Got to get a motion and a second.
Second, motion?
Motion, I need a motion.
Okay, I'm motion.
You got to get a second, motion to second that we approve the agenda, that it be forward for tonight, all in favor, right hand? Poser, eyes have it, thank you. Now, we have the minutes approved, the minute, we have two minutes, the, uh, April the fourteenth wet session, meeting minutes. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor, right hand? Okay, for our regular meeting of April the fourteenth, I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, right hand? They are approved, uh, no guest speakers, no guest speaker. And we down to reports. Our first on our agenda, a land management ordinance, LMO, community small group meeting, update from the staff, and the progress on it.
Yes, sir. So, we've had four such small group meetings. Three have been in District Five. We had our first one in District Three, uh, earlier this week. Uh, next week, we'll be having two more, uh, and we're working to schedule more after that. I anticipate seven to ten more small group meetings to be scheduled.
Did you have your attendance on the meeting?
I did, they, they've been good, um, they've been good, good discussion, good questions, um, good attendance. So, some honest questions and honest answers to, you know, what's going on, so, I would say they've been productive.
I guess, so I dreamed, I was in one last night, I dreamed it last, it was kind of rough though, that one got rough. I don't know how that came up, about five o'clock this morning. Anyway, um, that's good, I'm looking forward to, I got my Monday, I believe, in District One. Isn't that right, uh, Kevin? District One, Monday night, right? Okay, at seven o'clock, okay. LMO draft consideration at the May fourth, twenty twenty-one county council meeting, county council had a discussion on the planning commission recommending to remove the current LMO draft on consideration. You comment on that?
Yes, sir. So, the county council discussed the recommendation, uh, from the planning commission. Uh, there was no disagreement with, uh, the commission's position. Uh, comments were generally along the lines of it's currently in the commission's hands, and they understand that, and will be awaiting your recommendation on a draft.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, next is a mandatory on the major subdivision at the May fourth, twenty twenty-one county council meeting. County council approved the third and final reading of the ordinance number twenty, twenty-one, seven, eighty, as amended. Ordinance prohibiting the application of major subdivision excluding those on, or previously approved plan development district. You comment that way through, okay?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, ninety days, uh, which is, we're currently within, following May fourth, uh, the county is under a moratorium on the application of major subdivisions. Uh, excluded from that would be our two planned developments that were approved, uh, Tavern Hill and Windsor. Major subdivision within those can apply for development. Uh, there's the potential for a resolution to extend the moratorium in additional ninety days at the conclusion of these, these ninety days.
What would be the official end date, Kevin, of the moratorium for this first phase, do you know?
Give me just a minute. That'd be August second.
August second, okay. Thank you. Um... So, is there, uh, is there any way, I mean, other way they could come to us for, you know, approval of the development? Like falling under PD or...
The, yes, they could, a development could seek to do a planned development, you know, applying to rezone the property for the PD, and the planning commission would then be able to provide recommendation to county council on whether or not to approve that PD or what conditions to attach to an approval of that PD. That would go forward through council. Uh, if council chose to approve it, after third reading, it would go into effect. They would not be able to apply for major subdivision within it because it was not a previously approved planned development.
I guess, um, I have to excuse any sarcasm here, but, um... you know, could they, uh, I guess, would we, would we have to approve it because of all the laws that exist?
A planned.
Spicing that with a little sarcasm.
A pla, a planned, a planned development is purely your judgment.
Or can we, in the spirit of the moratorium, say just no, no, no?
You could, uh, a planned development is purely a recommendation, it's not like a review of a major subdivision where you're checking for compliance with the ordinance, right? They're presenting something to you where you can state, you know, we like this, we dislike that, right? Or, we just don't, you know, wait until the, you know, moratorium's over and development per the regulations that are currently on the property. You could, you could tell them that, now, you're providing recommendation to Council. Council ultimately makes the decision of whether or not to approve that rezoning, they do not have to adhere to the commission's recommendation.
So ultimately, it's them. So, the, um, the moratorium, uh, could it have included saying, could have canceled out PDs as well?
It could, they potentially could have put a moratorium on planned development applications. It's a different process because it's a rezoning, not a development. So, then there would become a question of, where are you gonna put a moratorium on any rezoning cases? There's, there's a lot of, it's, it's moving into another category. The other thing too that's important to note is that the reason that was cited for the moratorium was that we're currently updating our land development regulations. Well, when a property owner applies for a planned development, they're coming to the county and saying, what would be the custom land development regulations that you would apply to this specific piece of property? If the case is such that we're under a moratorium because our current ordinances and regulations are not prepared for the scale of development that we're seeing, well, something where the developer is saying, you create the custom ordinances for it, right? Kind of falls outside the spirit of what the moratorium is there for.
All right, thank you, now we're going to old business. Now, old business at, at hand, is a subdivision application for Hollow Oak. ID one seventy-six, double out, double out, zero, one, eight, triple out, Sunny Brook Road and Sable Lane by JSMG Development LLC. And first, we have a public hearing on this. And we're gonna open up for a public hearing at this time, you got the list, have a list for. And we're going to, uh, we have four names on here to address this, and we're gonna ask you to, uh, try to limit it three minutes if possible, and strictly on the subject at hand, which is, uh, the subdivision that we're discussing. Ron Ste- Ron Ste- Steve, okay. Yes, sir, come up and state your name. Uh, you got the mic over here? State your name. Location.
You can have a seat this time.
Yes, sir, that one should be on.
Yeah, that works. Okay, my name is Ron Steve. I live at one nine six Sable Lane, directly across from this proposed, uh, development. And I also own land, a couple acres, directly adjacent to this proposed development. Uh, my wife and I strongly oppose proceeding with this development and recommend disapproval by the commission on this application. Our comments, which were made at the last meeting during the public comment, uh, are in the record. I think the record was approved, okay? And so, they are still pertaining, even with the changes being considered by this developer. Tonight, I'm gonna limit my comments to the comprehensive plan. And why I see that the developer not in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And I understand it's not law, okay? I got that point. Let me go forward. Uh, in the plan, on page two, it talks about a community facilities element, which considers water supply, treatment, distribution, sewage system, wastewater, emergency services, fire protection, et cetera. And it says, the state's planning law also requires that the community facilities element be adopted before subdivisions or land development regulations can be adopted. In my opinion, in my wife's opinion, compliance with this provision has not been developed, uh, demonstrated by the developer. Pure and simple, straightforward in the comprehensive plan. Number two, the plan page three point eight and three point nine, groundwater use rates. Groundwater use rates have increased significantly, especially in urbanizing areas of the county. Growth in a number of homes on wells is the primary factor for these water use changes. This development process proposes some seventy-five additional lots on wells, which would ser, seriously contribute to a problem here, as far as the increased use rates. No analysis on aquifer impacts has been presented by the developer. Excellent discussion by Mr. Ashcroft before is right on the money with this. Public sewer systems, this is what the plan says, public sewer systems have had little direct, directly traceable impact on water quality changes that result from their usage. So, with a public water system, there's little problem that's traceable to that. However, owners of septic systems have little regulation after the systems are installed. Septic systems are not permanent and with failure can contribute significantly to the degradation of the water quality due to fecal chloroform pollution. That's right in the comprehensive plan, those words. The county should, this isn't a plan, the county should monitor negative or potentially negative water quality impacts by individual landowners through cooperative agreements with the local DEHAC office to review reports of failures. That's in essence, one of my comments from the last meeting, as far as monitoring system in place. If this plan goes through and DEHAC just has a weak moment and they approve it for some reason, we need to have monitoring wells in place, paid for by the developer, and you start early before development starts. Or you don't get baseline water quality data to compare down the road when you do have an impact. You need baseline data to know you had an impact.
Okay, sir, we, you know, you, I appreciate the comments, all you, you know, you, you've done your three minutes and, uh.
Is up?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But I, that good. Three minutes, it's time, yes, that, that's time, we've been, give him a little, we, you know, he got a little bit more, I give him a little bit more time, but three minutes is our time.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, thank you.
Yes, sir, appreciate it. Uh, Vicki? Come on up, ma'am. Yes, sir, okay, I, I gotta address you, I was hoping that's your wife that we got. State your name, ma'am, in, in the mic, so we get it for record.
We moved to South Carolina thirty-plus years ago.
Ma'am, state your name for record.
Uh, Vicki Steve, and I live at one ninety-six Sable Lane.
Thank you, ma'am, okay.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, we moved to South Carolina thirty-plus years ago, and twenty of those years, uh, we lived in a development in North Augusta. Um, we looked forward to retirement where we could keep our horses and our grandchildren could, uh, ride with us on our four-wheeler over the surrounding dirt roads. We were looking for a quieter and more simple lifestyle. If this development is allowed with its half acre to one acre lots, all of what we worked for will change. Most of the people who presently live here own three to five or more acres of land. We live on Sable Lane directly across from the proposed development. With one acre lots, gone will be our privacy and possibly our well water. Sable Lane is a dirt road that is like a washboard most, much of the time because the county doesn't have the means to bring in sand clay that is so badly needed, and we understand that. You can say that this development doesn't have an entrance on Sable Lane, but most likely it will become a cut through. Please consider minimum three to five acre lot sizes, like so many rural communities. Please let us continue to enjoy what we have worked so hard for. And please do not approve this Hollow Oak subdivision as currently planned. And I thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, appreciate it. Brian Dodson. Go ahead.
You have to address the chair.
Address that, right. My name's Brian Dodson, I live at one hundred Sable Lane. After I saw your thing that you printed out, I had a, so I can't ask questions, about the pond that I fished in with my son, where the drainage looks like it's going to be running off, how are we gonna deter from ruining that pond? That's what I wanna know, that's why I don't want this subdivision to be put in there. I've taken my son and me, all his friends and everybody else in this neighborhood, we fishing a pond right down the road, so, I was just curious about that. He had took any consideration of that, about as far as people living out there, as long as we've lived out there. That's about all I got to say.
Where's, where's your?
Yes, sir.
Where's your property?
My property is down here, I live on one hundred. But this pond that's behind it, Mr. Holmes owns, that has allowed me to fish in it for years, and I was just curious to where, cause I see where on this thing where it shows the drainage, on the backside, about there?
That's gonna go through that detention area on the top right?
Yeah.
And, uh, I guess detention is a loose term, I don't think it's gonna stop any water.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, it looks, to me.
Basically.
To me, and that's a question I've later, can I speak, sir? Um, it looks like lot twenty-four is gonna get some washout from that detention up on the corner. And, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna go down, you know, that's a, that's that notch that goes that you see there, and, and, uh, so it goes off of our diagram.
Yes, sir.
What happens, but it goes towards the pond.
Yes, sir.
Um, I would assume.
Oh, that pond is right through the wood right there.
Looks like it would fill that long skinny one first.
Yeah, that's what I was curious.
That's where that goes, the long skinny one.
Yes, sir.
That's downstream of the big one, so I guess it overflows in, the big one overflows into the little one.
I was just curious about that, that's why I don't, wouldn't want that out there ruining something I've grown up doing with my son and all his friends.
Right.
I appreciate those times.
Baseline samples?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, I appreciate that, uh, what I, what I suggest you do on that is you, uh, address DEHAC with it. Yeah, no, you, and address DEHAC with it, uh, cause, uh, I'm dealing with them out of there in another county right now. And, uh, you know, cause, uh, we ended up in court with whoever gonna go. But, uh, you know, from back drain on that, it run, run a pond. And, uh, it wasn't properly done according to what, what, when it started out, and, uh, and DEHAC, we got a problem with them on that, but anyway, I, I suggest that what you do. Right, okay. Alrighty, uh, if any more comment, I think that's it, I would have on there. Oh, oh, on the sheet, right, okay. What's your name? Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't call, I'm, I skipped you there. I'm sorry, come on up, United Six, Sable Lane, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Your time today, my name is Steve Helms, I live at ninety-six Sable Lane. And, uh, we went from seventy-nine to seventy-four lots, um, and, uh, I remember the gentleman on the far left last time saying you guys really hadn't approved anything less than, uh, one acre lots in a long time, if ever. Um, so, we went, we still got all the half acre lots in Edgfield County. Uh, the water septic fire traffic concerns still all exist. And out of your current ordinance, the Rural Residential Development District is which we're in, seeks to preserve the rural nature of the development within its boundaries managing density, fostering growth that is relatively quiet, low traffic, otherwise use compatible with the existing development, none of these happen. Through regulations aimed at achieving these ends, the district is intended to maintain the quality of life that citizens, farmers, and business owners of this district have historically enjoyed. That's out of your, that's out of our current ordinance. Also, in the ordinance, the purpose of the article is to advance the objectives of South Carolina Local Planning Enabling Act in nineteen ninety-four to require harmonious, orderly, and progressive development of land pursuant to public health, safety, economy, good order. And it comes down to, to five different, and I'm only gonna speak to two of them. To ensure the timely provision of required streets, utilities, and other facilities and services to the new land development. Haven't done that yet. To ensure the adequate provision of safe and convenient traffic access and circulation, both vehicular and pedestrian, and through new land developments. Four dirt roads and one paved road does not do that. So, let's go to the comprehensive plan. This speaks to what Mr. Ashcroft said. Haphazard residential development. At some time in the future, Edgfield County's future generations will have to deal with the problem of this, the unregulated residential growth and its implications. The question facing policymakers is whether to act now and guide positive development or pass a problem on to future county residents when the problem may have blossomed into more critical proportions. The Edgfield County Planning Commission is charged with the organization and development of plans for the orderly growth of the county and to guide recommendations to the County Council to follow positive patterns for growth in the county. Exactly how can uncontrolled residential development become a long-term financial burden? On the county, the economic effects can be most readily seen when this leapfrog or sprawled growth is considered in relation to existing service infrastructure, which we have none out there. This includes service provisions as transportation corridors, four dirt roads, education, sewage treatment plants, we have none. Water treatment plants, well, we don't have that either. So, in summary, approval of this subdivision flies in the face of both the current county ordinance and the comprehensive plan, and common sense for an area that is dissected by four dirt roads and one paved road. Please say no to this extremely horrendous idea. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. The more I think we have. I'll mind clear on this, okay? Now, we'll go down to Alrey, you on it? For the, uh, Planning Commission, and the, uh, come in from the guys for, uh. You love it again.
Yep.
According to what we have heard and what we've seen and they're in compliance with, uh, the ordinance that is in, you know, at present in, in order here, remember lot size and so forth, and the zoning districts and the application process, all this have been met. And, uh, I think we've compromised some on some stuff. And permitted, uh, land usage and, uh, compliance. And I've, I've got questions in mind and all and so forth, but that's side question according to what we have in, on the books right now. They meet requirements. They meet requirements and, uh, even though we disagree, a lot of disagree, I'm so, uh, I'll wait for the flow for the rest of the guy before we make a vote on it. We've got, we got three choices, we can vote it, we can deny it, or we can pass it, or we can, uh, I don't know, but, I don't know whether any more, uh, about the land, any more agreement that we can come to, cause we've been agreeing every time I have a meeting with the, with the owner there now, they probably is, uh, down to the bottom of the well where they agree on, so, uh, you have anything?
I have that many things to say, sir, I have that many things to say, but, uh, if, uh, if I could just say.
I have that many things to say, bro, I have that many things to say, but, uh, if I could just say one.
Go ahead, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give the flow, you got time.
Okay, well, uh, I know there's some research done by somebody I thought was here. Some counties require you to come off well once you get infrastructure out there. Is that, can't see, um, was that counties here in South Carolina? I have any, uh, anyway, um, so, yeah, that's something we need to consider, and I'm sorry, you know, if I'm using this, but it is a very motivating thing, once it happens, um, to fix it. So, you know, I, I will discuss these things under the guise of Hollow Oak. But, uh, anyway, um, and I did actually have some questions, uh, for Hollow Oak, on the plat. Talk about section acres, what does that mean? Is that the acreage, yeah, is that the acreage?
Are you referring, is it on the far panel?
Far right, yeah, in the middle, yeah, there you go, there you go.
That's, that's information that the engineer puts on the plans. Sometimes it's wrong.
Okay.
I usually do the math myself to check it.
Sure.
And make sure.
Total and number of lots and minus and plus, right? Okay.
I, I do my own calculations and put that in the memo, I usually don't adhere to that because sometimes it's wrong.
Okay. Um, and do we know how close the, closest water tap is? Nope. Uh.
Two miles.
Two mile. It's expensive to get it there too. And, um, do, is there any numbers on, you know, as far as people on wells, what the average water use is that you know of? Can we find it somewhere?
We could maybe reach out to DHEC and see if they collect that kind of data.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll send these to you then. As far as the septic tanks that they're planning on putting out there, I guess, again, that's a DHEC issue, but are they leach fields or pump tanks or whatever they're told to do by DHEC?
Yeah.
Okay. Get it, um, and, um. Yeah, so as far as wells, do some people get their water, well water tested every year or two years or five years, or is that just up to them?
Yeah, left up, left up, left up to the owner. If you got one to test, you can call me and I can get a test for you.
All right, and, uh.
Do something every week.
I think I asked this last month, but, um, you know, if all these wells dried up, uh, what, what is the recourse?
Uh, it'd be the same as has been practiced for a long time, is people re-dig typically.
Okay.
People typically re-dig, so when a, when a well dries up, typically they go deeper.
And, yeah, 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 well, we know the cost, um, that's, it's a whole thing, um. So really, it's on, it's on the landowner is what it is?
Right.
There's no performance bond backup, okay, so, okay, so they do it, DHEC approves it, we're bystander on, on that. Okay. And, uh, appreciate the time, sir. Some of these have been answered already. And, uh, I guess a lot of it, a lot of these questions is DHEC, DHEC, DHEC is my answers. How far away, like on a half acre lot, how far away are the wells and drain fields?
Yeah, usually as far as possible, it's, it's also, the conditions on the property are going to dictate, you know, per specific case.
Okay, so really.
Just to give you a, just, just to add a little, just for your information, so. When they get preliminary approval and they get their engineers out there to start their engineering plan, their engineering plan goes to DHEC and they get what's called a Schwepp done, so a stormwater pollution plan. Okay, that gets sent, sent to us, and then they can start their infrastructure project. For every single lot before they can build a house, they have to have that specific lot tested by DHEC and a custom system designed for that lot. They cannot get a building permit without that design. That design, so if DHEC says that there has to be three hundred and fifty-three feet between the well and the septic tank, it's gonna be on that diagram. So each lot will have its own plan reviewed and approved by DHEC.
Does that be on record in Columbia or somewhere?
We'll have a record of it in our office, I mean, yeah, so, so let, let's say, let's say they get all of their approvals done, um, and it all comes back, they get their infrastructure in, and they're given permission to subdivide. They build their first three houses, and you, you come into my office and say, I want to see the paperwork for, um, six, seven, and nine, whatever the road name is. We can print that for you. So we will have a copy of all of their approvals in each permit. So each permit will have its own construction documents.
Okay, so the first well that's drilled out there, I guess if somebody wants a base sample, that's where they can go get it from. If, if, of course, the residents agree.
And that, that's between the DHEC and the homeowners, the property owners.
Shooting, I'm just shooting from the hip here.
They are on your well test, you can, you can do DHEC, or you can get, uh, individual company. See, David's in Florida, there are no individual for me.
Okay.
But you can, you, you got a charge, they're gonna cost you the way, but, uh, that's a process, right?
Okay. And, um, I guess in this plan, uh, where does the street water go to?
That's part, that's part of the stormwater pollution prevention plan. So when they do their civil engineering for their, all their infrastructure and for their lots, so no water that falls on that property is allowed to come off of that property. That's your typical, that's your typical.
Right, so I mean, are there actual retention ponds?
So, okay, so the, the retention ponds are sized by DHEC, obviously, the civil, they all hire civil engineers that design everything. DHEC then goes and approves it. DHEC determines where that water has to collect and at what rate it has to discharge.
Okay, so really for them to draw a retention pond down here would be a little premature, is that?
I think a lot of them do estimate about where it's at, but ultimately they don't get to decide that.
Right.
DHEC will tell them where it's gonna go and how big it's gonna be.
Okay, so sometimes it'd be a futile effort to draw it and then it changes, but that's, that, what I'm hearing is that's not in our purview.
Right, so an engineer will typically, when they do like a preliminary plan like that, they'll pick the lowest spot and they'll draw in, you know, with some basic hydrology numbers, they'll draw in what they think that the pond is gonna be, but until they actually get on site, do surveys, they, they don't know, so until that civil engineering is done and DHEC says, you know what, we don't think that's big enough, or we think it's too big, that's, DHEC, DHEC will tell them what they have to do.
Okay.
If I can real quick, Gary, do you want to come up and? I indicated to Gary that, asking him if he, does he get his wells tested, and the data from that, would he be willing to share it with the commission afterwards?
So to include, um, yes, I do have, every home gets the well tested within thirty days of them moving in. They get copies of that, we use CSRA analytics in Augusta. Um, if you're not familiar with well testing procedures and the process of it, it is very intense. It's not going to take a bottle of Dasani, filling it up and taking it down there. It's, uh, it's very extensive in how they do it. DHEC also sends out post information after you move in, um, explaining, uh, basically your care and usage of a well system. Also, they, they allow you to come into their facility on Aiken, bring them there, the water, they'll supply and you do the test. Same thing with, um, septic systems. Have you ever looked into a septic system, it's very, you would think it would be very gross, if you ever pump one off, the water's actually clear.
Yeah, okay.
So sandy soil conditions, I understand that everyone wants clean water, drinking clean water, but yes, I will provide well tests for every single house, turn them into the county, uh, before CO. All right?
Yeah, appreciate it.
You have anything?
No, these are the kind of conversations we don't need to continue to have, you know.
Yeah, we gonna, we gonna, we gonna, we gonna.
My point being is that, you know, we've got work ahead of us as a commission, and these are the, this is a prime example of.
What we need to do.
Why we need to quickly get our boots on the ground and why our meetings are good, but this is exhibit number A of why we need to, you know, move quickly to the proper LMO for accounting, so.
I agree with you.
I think, um, there's questions that are out in the crowd that when we ask these questions, that, uh, those questions get answered. So while I am informed on some of the questions I asked, um, I, it's cause I guesstimate that somebody out there needs to know it. Primarily the responsibilities that DHEC holds, it takes things off of our backs, et cetera. But, uh, I agree, I like shorter meetings.
Okay, with that said, flow is, uh, open for motion on this subdivision application here for Saddle Brook Road and Sable Lane. And we're, uh, now my, coming from the chair, my recommendation is that we, uh, approve it. If we have any condition, on the condition that.
If you do put any conditions in place, you need to specify them.
Right, okay, if we have any condition, then I want to apply to it, put that on your motion to well. Vote on it.
You could approve the developer's offer to provide that date on the wells, you could prove on the condition that that is provided.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that, that, uh, you, uh, you provide the data to us on all the well and the septic tanks according to what you, that it be available for us. If we go along, you know, cause see, we got the approval that gonna come from DHEC later, but we just pass on condition that. That he can go ahead and proceed from where you are at this time, preliminary.
Um, if they were given the condition to provide that data, what I suspect would be the case is when they turned and came in for building permits for each individual lot, they would then be sharing that with our department.
So it would be before they got their CO.
Give me a motion, you'll give me a motion.
Well. I have, I have something to say, I'm probably gonna be controversial here in a minute.
Well, get a motion and then we'll discuss.
We need, uh, uh, we're gonna need a discussion at the second. But if somebody can make a motion, I'm not gonna stand.
Brian, you, you're making the motion, I'll make it.
If we don't take it up.
We don't take it up, it'll automatically go approved tomorrow, right?
He did not vote on it, it's automatically.
Uh, we need a vote tonight.
Do we have a, do we have a right as a commission not to vote on it tonight?
Yes, per state law, you have sixty days to review and vote on an application. The developer waived that to, so that we could meet tonight, and if you do not vote on it tonight, it re-ups and as of tomorrow, it would be automatically approved.
Right.
So they would still have to go through the same process in terms of the engineering and going to DHEC and such, and they would still have to bring final plat to us. Uh, but, you know, they'd basically just get an automatic preliminary plat approval.
My vote, a, uh, hypothetical, what happens if, um, what happens if it gets voted down tonight, what's the building recourse?
He could appeal it to the courts.
Right.
And then what happens?
We would lose.
No, that, phone, no, no.
Yeah, I was gonna say, thank you, bro.
Yeah, I mean.
You know.
It would be a tough road to hoe, yes, it would be a tough road to hoe, because we have to show, you know, you have to give good reasons why you're turning it down. You know, if it's violating the comprehensive plan, you know, they can still develop even if violates a comprehensive plan, be up to the court to decide.
Okay, so that means you'd be.
And they've met all the conditions.
You would be there.
Yes.
Takes your charge to the county?
Yes, I would be defending you.
Well, I. Uh, that, let's hold you for a minute, uh. Well, I motion that we approve it. For, 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 preliminary on this here, that they can go ahead so they can get, uh, DHEC and whatever. That they need.
I'd address that second.
Second, and, uh, in discussion.
Yes, um, I guess I'll just let you know, so I'm not pulling the rest of the committee here, but I will play my cards in here and I will be voting a symbolic no. So.
Addie, 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 honor, 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 we don't need honor, honor.
Hold on, this isn't, this isn't to reflect on the rest of the commission. This is to reflect on the process and how things are so mixed up. You know, because there's disagreement between, you know, logic and there's more logic here, and I probably have my own logic, but, uh, anyway, um, I just want the rest of the commission to understand why I'm doing that.
Okay, uh, any more discussion? Remember you have a right to vote, whatever you, you know, I'm not persuading you how to vote, but if you got a right to vote, how you plan to go, so all in.
Say, hold my phone and watch this.
All, all in favor, raise your right hand, all in favor of passing, raise your right hand. Pollers? So we got a tie here, what we?
Uh, a tie is a denial.
Deny, okay, okay, right, okay, good, whatever, all right. All right, we'll move on to next item. New business. Resonate application residential agriculture development RD to plan development rents. Particul ID one twenty-six double R zero five zero sixteen triple R two ninety-three, rural road by Windsor Development Group, LLC. At the, uh, add-on, the four acre, the one acre project that we have, that private here, we have a list on that. She want to take, I'll take it, okay, all right. Okay, we have, uh, Tompkins, two five seven Key Road, would you come up, state your name? Thompson, Thompson. You don't need to come in, okay. Greg Ross, Edgefield Road, Trent.
My name's Greg Ross, I'm at two five five six Edgefield Road. It's, uh, my property's on the northern side of the proposed, uh, storage facility. Also, my backyard, uh, backs up to the copper field development. And Mr. Singletary may, uh, remember the email letter I sent to him in February, I'm the guy with the little piece of heaven. Nestled deep in the woods, which the woods are pretty much gone. So when I heard about this, uh, new development with the mini storage, I was somewhat concerned about the, um, losing more of my privacy, I have about a hundred yard driveway, and on the south side of the driveway is where the mini storages, and there are really thick vegetation, trees, and shrubs, parallel in my driveway all the way down. And so I was concerned, I sent a letter out to, uh, Dave and Stuart Thompson about, uh, meeting and discussing what we could do to retain that, and they were agreeable. Uh, they are, they had to consider the, uh, the codes and, uh, ordinances, I guess, regarding how to do the buffer zone. But, uh, I'm hoping that we can work together, the planning commission, with the Blue Sky Properties, and keep me informed of hopefully retaining part of the, some of their, uh, Edgefield rural feel. By knocking all that buffer zone that's already there, it's like, gonna start from scratch trying to rebuild the foliage in that area. That's all I have to say.
One, one question, yeah, what, what kind of trees is that? One, one question, yeah, what, what kind of trees is that pine, oak, a mix or what?
Mix.
Mix, okay, right. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, any more comment than that? If not, we're gonna go to the planning commission for a recommendation on this, and, uh.
Fab.
Yeah.
Um, since the, um, developer and the homeowner have already discussed it, if you wanted to place that recommendation that the natural buffer be maintained at their request, you can do that.
Right, okay, I would want to know.
I'm Stuart Thompson, uh, I'm the developer. With the understanding that we would try to maintain that buffer, there are some areas, and I have, we've discussed it with Mr. Ross. And we've actually talked about possibly moving the fence and adjusting some of the setbacks from the buildings to allow us to try to keep some of the natural buffers that are there. Because in a hundred years, we couldn't grow what's sitting there now if we planted it the best we could. But there may be a couple spots down the line where we have to get in there closer and we might have to take some of that out, but we would have to go back and replace it with a tier two buffer. We would try to do that.
You know, try hard, right, you know, try real hard, real hard, right, okay.
Right, I mean, I don't know how it's better to say.
The other way, the doggy didn't slip accidentally, we're gonna.
Fab.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, the type two buffer is required by law, he has no choice but to do that. His agreement with the, the property owner and the planning commission would be to try and maintain the natural buffer as much as possible. He does not have a choice on the tier two buffer.
Okay, okay, all right, good, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right, that's it, planning commission, you know, discussion on.
I don't have any com- further comments. Do we know that that's what there meets type two?
Type two is the required.
Do we know that what is there meets type two?
The, uh, the area that he's speaking of exceeds type two.
Okay.
There, there's more, you know, the, the type two is X number of large trees, X number of medium trees, X number of bushes. Well, if you can imagine, you got pines and oaks, you know, sosaias spread out, and then you got the little ones and all, you basically almost can't see through it.
Right, that's it.
Especially the part that's from his, where his house is. Now, right up near the road, it's a little thinner, so if we have to, we will bring that up to type two.
Right, right.
Without destroying what he wants.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it's been my experience, usually what's there is better than what you can put in, so.
And on the other side, the other side is pretty real thick, especially when you get down towards the back.
Motion, can I get a motion?
So move, second.
So, okay.
Could I get clarification on that motion? Is that motion to approve under the condition that was discussed by the property owner and the developer with the commission?
I was working totally on assumptions, yes.
Okay.
Okay, all right, uh, in discussion.
No, sir.
No discussion.
None.
All in favor of approval with the condition that we mentioned on the buffer, raise your right hand, pose it, I'd have it, okay. I'm gonna be watching different clothes now, now, the next time you're in trouble if you don't go. Okay, thanks. Land development, it's application of state code station and sto- and storage. We just finished that, then.
Yeah, we skipped the order.
What we skip, what I skipped, the, uh.
You, yeah, you did, item B first, so I've just given you the sign up for item A. You call out item B first, I believe.
That was taken, now we need the Windsor.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Rezone application for residential agriculture development of RD to plan development Windsor. PD, uh, Partica Island, ID one twenty-six double O zero five zero sixteen triple O at two ninety-three Murrow Road by Windsor Development Group. Now we got that public here, okay, I have two names on here, uh, I'm getting the, I'm going back with on this one. Jason Win- Winright. Did that, uh, but now, the name, the name eluded me, I had a problem with that. Windsor, okay.
Look, if you took all the H's out, it'd make a whole lot more sense.
Oh, okay, good.
I just, if, if I can answer any questions, if you want me to run back through the, through the, the background on this, I'm, I'm happy to do that now in the public hearing setting, if that's, uh, appropriate. If that's what you want me to do, I mean, that's why I just wanted to come.
Cause I'm just for the public side, just run through.
Run through it briefly, kind of brief do it, right?
So I'm Jason Winkler with Ivy Development, so everybody knows, we are the developer of Windsor on, um, Murrow Road. And the area that's outlined in red is a one acre parcel that we recently purchased. Um, it was not originally part of the Windsor, uh, PD that, um, we had rezoned, oh, probably a year and a half ago. Um, so our proposal, uh, on this is to bring that one acre into the, uh, Windsor PD and, um, to create four lots. Those four lots will be the same size as the, uh, the, um, the rest of the lots coming into Windsor, so they all match. And, um, we, we are not proposing any other changes to the, to the current Windsor PD, so all the regulations that were approved as part of that original ordinance would apply to these four lots as well. So all we're asking is to bring these four lots into the Windsor Development.
Good question, um, the dark line on the top of, uh, say forty-five through, uh, sixty-one, yeah, forty-five through sixty-one, that dark line, thank you. I guess that dark line to the lot is that kind of like HOA or common area?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, so, once, uh, seventy-one through sixty-eight, between those and the right red line, that's the common area as well? The right side square, red square?
The red square, I believe, is the existing one acre lot. And any space that's not shown as part of one of the four additional lots would be within the HOA's open space.
That's correct. Is it correct that you'll have the same distance off of lot one as you would have on that other lot when you get through with your engineering? It is, yes, sir, um, it's a little, little deceiving on this drawing, this is, you know, the master plan, uh, once we, once we, uh, finish engineering on the lots one sixty-eight through one seventy-one, they essentially match up, um, with the lots across the street. So to Mr. Brown's question, lot one and lot one seventy-one will be, both be the same distance off of Murrow Road.
Okay. So is lot one correct or one seventy-one?
It's probably somewhere in between both of them, I think.
So average, I mean, is there?
I don't know the exact footage off the road, but, um, it's probably, I don't know, forty feet maybe. What's the, um, plan for your entryway and I'm sure as most all your developments, you do some sort of entryway and. We do, we, uh, we have, we're almost finished with the sign, it's, it's been a little slow process up front. Um, but, uh, so we've, you know, finally gotten power through, we don't like to do too much until all the utilities have trenched through. You know, you don't want to plant things and then phone and power and cable and everybody go through there, tear it all up. Um, so they are basically complete at this point, and so we'll come in there and landscape both sides of that entrance, screen it pretty heavily from the road. Uh, not, we're not gonna plant stuff, you know, like that and wait for it thirty years to grow up, we're gonna go ahead and, and, and put in some pretty nice shrubs and trees to go ahead and screen uh, buffer out the neighborhood from, uh, from Murrow.
That's all my questions.
Okay, uh, is it Monica, uh, Pay? Hello, how you pronounce that?
It's actually Desdemona Pastajewski, but you got lost in my name last time, I didn't want to hurt you.
Yes, ma'am, okay, thank you. I'm not, I'm not Ed Brad, only name.
Question in regards to this development in particular, that one acre lot that they just purchased that is contiguous, what is to stop the developer or anyone else from continuously buying acre after acre after acre to add to this PD? Is that gonna be the practice where they can just ask for a rezone, then add an acre, and then add another acre?
Would you like me to answer that question? They can apply to do so, the planning commission then provides their recommendation to county council. And the county council decides whether or not to amend the PD plan to include that new acre.
Yeah, so it goes into perpetuity, basically, if it's done that way, thank you, Mr. Clark, help me here.
So zoning is an ordinance, and any ordinance can be changed by county council with three readings and a public hearing. So if you came and asked to rezone your property, is the same thing. They make a recommendation, planning commission has three readings, and then whatever they vote on, county council has three readings, and then whatever they decide, that's what it is.
Okay, one other question on those four lots, and the developer's still here, where do driveways, please?
Coming in off our different roads, same as the rest of our block.
All right, thank you for that. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, any more? Now, we appreciate that, we go into our recommendation to the planning commission on this.
Make motion to approve.
Second, in discussion.
This would be a recommendation to county council, so you would, yes, so.
Let me read, I make a motion to approve the recommendation of the rezone.
Of the rezone, right, okay, second, in discussion. And now, all in favor of recommending it to county council with rezoning, raise your right hand, poses, I'd have it, so, yeah, okay, thank you. All right, consideration of ordinance to amend chapter twenty-four, one seventy-four of the Edgefield County land ordinance at the May fourth, twenty twenty-one county council meeting. They approved the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-one seven eighty-nine, have followed it to us for recommendation. Y'all looked at this, look at page, uh, twenty-one, Miranda.
Yes, sir.
Everyone read that, uh?
If you like, Mr. Chairman, I can describe this ordinance.
Right, describe the ordinance, it's listed on the back there for, you know.
This is an ordinance that Doc and I wrote, um, what it does is it creates a minimum lot size requirement based off the availability of sewer or water, uh, uh, community systems, uh.
So it's an or, it's not an and?
Or, yes, yes, correct, so for example, if you look, and this was within the lot section, that's the same section where we have the minimum lot size requirements based off of unpaved roads. Uh, lots with community sewer and community water have a minimum lot size of twelve thousand square feet, that's in keeping with the current zoning ordinances for minimum lot size within all our zone areas of the county. Uh, lots with community water and without community sewer, uh, have a minimum lot size of one half acre. And lots without community water, uh, or community sewer, minimum lot size of one acre. Uh, there's also a sunset clause, uh, on the ordinance of one year after adoption.
Okay, all right. Question. I recommend that we. I recommend that we, uh. We're getting cast, yeah, that was all.
I guess my question, so where did the size of lots come from, so?
They came from several things, one of the primary things that we did was try to avoid conflict with the other lot sections. So for example, if we went larger on this, you would end up in the territory of what rules on unpaved road, what rules in the case of, you know, sewer, uh, or, uh, septic being used, water being used, or well being used. It could easily be changed, I would likely advise that if you were to change it, that you would say whichever larger rules. Yes, we did reach out to the Edgefield County Water and Sewer Authority, um, and they expressed that these seem to be appropriate sizes. Now, this would not automatically say approve a lot, for example, if someone had a one acre lot, um, but it did not perk, right? They wouldn't be able to then build a home on it, and so they would still have to go through the DHEC approval process. But this just establishes a minimum based upon the availability.
And this addresses paved roads and not?
Yes, all of the requirements on unpaved roads in terms of minimum lot size, unless they pave the road, are larger than one acre. So that automatically puts it above any of these.
My recommendation would be to take the, the one half acre and move it to a one acre, and to take without community water or sewer and move that to a two acre, in my mind of a two acre lot size.
I agree, cause, um, that thing I did for, I mean, the average size of the smaller lots was three acres, so, you know, it's not gonna be consistent throughout the county, but I think two acres is perfect.
Just, just as a note, you know, uh, two and a half acres is what's used on, uh, the second tier of lots on roads with less than fifty feet of right of way that are unpaved, uh, that are within half a mile of a road with fifty feet of right of way. So you could go to two and a half acres just to be in keeping with.
Yeah, okay, with that too, okay. Can I get a motion on that, you know, clarify?
Let me think just a minute.
Okay, thank, make sure we get it right here.
Lots with community water and without community sewer, so lots that have water but would have septic. And you have lots without community water or.
That'd be the two and a half, right? So, uh. So with the water without the sewer, we talking about, uh? If you got one.
The, the first, the first item is when it is on water and sewer. The second item, lots with community water and without community sewer, would be water and septic. And the last one, lots without community water or community sewer are well and septic.
Is there any other guidance as far as, because the one right now as it reads is a one half acre, is there any other guidance as far as what the common lot size would be for something that had septic on it, I mean, I guess not really, I'm thinking about.
And on the land I put, right?
Yeah, when, when I talked to DHEC, they, they said they do that study on a per lot basis, so.
Right.
You know, they don't have a recommended minimum or maximum.
One thing this doesn't take into account is a huge part of septic systems are soil conditions. This would be a countywide application of this rule. One of the reasons that there's a sunset clause in it is that because the county does not review well and septic systems, it would be better, in my perspective, in terms of planning, to look at adopting zoning ordinances that just established minimum lot size long term in areas where we think, where you can determine what you think the appropriate minimum lot size is there, right? And you could factor into your decision-making, you know, what's the infrastructure availability without making it specific to that condition? Because I can, look, there will, there will be lots that are half acre in Edgefield County that you can easily cite well and septic on. And we will be saying to those residents in this time period, if adopted, that they cannot develop that lot.
But they could come and get a variance, could they not?
They could not.
Go ahead. Go ahead, I'm not out.
Um, I'm sorry, can you, if you're going to talk, please go up to the mic, state your name and then talk, otherwise there's no way we can get you in the recording.
Thanks, thanks, Doc, my name is James Oliver, six ninety-three Curry Town Road, North Augusta. Y'all know where Curry Town Station is on Curry Town Road, most people, a lot of people do. That has been a very nice development out there for a long time, but did you also know that there's about ten to fifteen lots in there that did not perk? So that's an example of what we're dealing with here, there's a lot of those lots in there that people bought, they, they bought the lot and then they couldn't build anything on it, so. You don't like to get caught in that thing, and that's mainly, it's not because of the water, it's because of the septic system. That the, the soil in that area is, uh, it has a large layer of green clay, and you cannot perk through it. DHEC won't allow you to have a septic taken there, so they have all these really nice lots in there and they're beautiful, but. But what happens now, the one lot that did perk, the guy was able to buy the lot at a pretty high price right next door to it, you know, because what else you gonna do with that? You know, not much. So, I'm in favor of what, uh, Mr. Brown recommended here, and I think that would be a good thing to get started. I am so glad that you guys have put this together so that we can have something to base it on, and I think minimum lot size is one thing. Thank you.
Yeah, but it could be a problem, and that's why I always tell people, before you buy, get it perked. People, they call me every day, I said, if you buy every twenty acre, you, before you buy it, you make sure it perked. And, and you, you say, I mean, that's just, that's the only safe way you gotta go at it. I wouldn't buy a part of a fifty acre unless I check it. And I mean, that's seriously, you know, and I tell folk down to the, from, from experience, I've known guys buy ten acre, and it wouldn't perk. Or you find out what, you know, what, and that's possible. So, you gotta go, okay. All right, now we're back to, uh, who we gonna give a motion? How, what we gonna say? Yes, sir.
Before you do the motion, I suggest the motion be to approve the ordinance that's been presented with the recommend, and make the recommend changes.
Right.
Because councils already had the first reading.
Yes, sir, right, okay.
So, if you approve everything else in the ordinance, and then just say change wherever the numbers you want to change.
So, uh, what changes are we gonna, we talking about two and a half acres on the water sewer, right? One acre on the, uh, wa- wa- on the second one. On the water, the lot will continue with the community water without sewer, one acre. Is that correct? Okay.
So, move to approve the ordinance as presented with,
With those corrections.
Recommend the ordinance as presented with those two changes.
I'd like to move to recommend this, uh.
Could I bring one thing to your attention before you make your motion? This will create a scenario where you may have a contradict, contradicting situation where they lot on an unpaved road is being told that it can be a minimum lot size of one acre, and, but due to the water, the, the, the lack of water and the lack of sewer, is being told that it has to be two and a half acres. You should specify in which case, you know, when they contradict which rules. I would advise that whichever is larger, be the one rules.
Paved or unpaved road, it's still a piece of property, so I would go with the larger.
And if you want to, you can make, you can recommend that they approve it based on the changes discussed.
Right. All right, go ahead. Can you do that?
Can anyone inventory the changes that we discussed?
I, I.
Hand on tape.
I can.
Please.
Okay, so, the first change would be lots with community water and without community sewer would be recommended to be one acre minimum lot size. The second change would be lots without community water or community sewer would have a minimum lot size of two and a half acres. In an instance where there's a contradiction between section six and subsection five, the, whichever is larger of the two rules. So, if it was the case, for example, if it was on a unpaved road with at least fifty feet of right of way, therefore is identified as having a minimum lot size of one acre, but it was going to be on well and septic, the minimum lot size would be two and a half acres.
As long as what you just said is going to be on the record, I will make a motion to approve the ordinance based on the conversation that we just had.
Motion second, all in favor, right hand. Poses, I'd have, go into the county council. Okay. Let me get that. All right, let's see here. I believe that's it.
Mr. Chairman, I had.
Oh, yeah, okay, now, I'm down to you now, okay, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I had made a request to make comments during the comments by the planning commission chair section.
Right.
Yeah, I'll go there.
Come on to the mic.
And state your name for the record.
My name is Kevin Singletary, I live at twenty-three Orchard Circle, Edgefield, South Carolina, two nine eight two four. Today, I have submitted my letter of resignation to Edgefield County. I have received an offer from the town of Chapin for their zoning administrator position, and I chose to accept it. I'm from Chapin, South Carolina, it is my hometown. Not only is Chapin my hometown, but I feel that their offer present, represents a tremendous personal and career opportunity for me, and I feel that it is in my best interest to accept. It is a tremendous personal and career opportunity to be offered this position, I'm very thankful for it. Uh, Edgefield County was very generous in the offer that was extended to me, for which I will always be grateful, and I can say that this was the hardest decision I've ever had to make professionally. I did not come to this decision lightly, and I took time to consider the two offers, discuss them with my family, and contemplated what was best for my future. I'm excited to serve my hometown, as I have Edgefield County. Edgefield has been a meaningful experience, and my time here as county planner will be a special chapter in my life. It is with pride that I will be able to say that I got my start in planning here in Edgefield County. Uh, this past year, I made Edgefield County my home, when I built my first house here. Uh, while I am leaving Edgefield County for employment elsewhere, uh, and this county is losing me as its planner, the county will not be losing me as a resident. Chapin is my hometown, but right now, for the foreseeable future, Edgefield is my home. I would like to take time to thank four groups of people separately. Uh, the first group of people I would like to thank is county council and county administration. Uh, thank you for the offer you made to me this week. It was not an easy decision to turn down this offer, and it let me know that the work I've done and the effort I've put forth has been appreciated. I was proud and flattered by the value you demonstrated in my employment here, and the value you put on my further employment here. Perhaps more importantly, thank you for the offer you made two and a half years ago to be your county planner. It has been a privilege to serve in this position, and I'm proud of the work I have done in it. I would not trade this experience I have received here for anything, as it has been constructive in who I am as a planner. Chapin will greatly benefit from what Edgefield has taught me. As I move forward in my chosen profession and career, please know that I will always have my eye on Edgefield County, and given the opportunity to work here again, it will get my utmost consideration. On that note, while my time as the county planner here is ending, I am not done with Edgefield County. We started, engaged in, and have worked on a process that I have no intention of abandoning. The decisions facing Edgefield County in the coming months and years are too important to me to not continue to participate in the ways that I can, whenever I can. With that, I would like to thank a second group, to the planning commission. Thank you for working with me. I hope I have been the best resource I can to you, and provided you with the information you need to make informed decisions, both on the developments you review and the plans you consider. I have a great deal of respect for you. You are volunteers, you are unpaid, and you are here out of your love for Edgefield County. The only reward you can be guaranteed is knowledge that you have done the best you can. I believe that this planning commission will do a wonderful job on the task at hand, and we will be proud of the end result. As I stated before, you won't have to do it without me, I will stay in touch and make myself, myself available to you. If you should ever have questions or want to talk about something, I will be available. I will come to meetings when I can and contribute in whatever way it is possible for me to do so. We live in a beautiful county with wonderful people. Let's put the best plan forward that we can for the county and its people. That brings me to the third group I would like to thank, the citizens of Edgefield County. Thank you for welcoming me into your home and allowing me to make it my home as well. I receive much gratitude for the work I do almost daily. Your praises and words of encouragement have not gone unappreciated. This is not an easy job, but knowing that I have done the best I can for you is a meaningful reward. As I conclude my service to Edgefield County as the planner, I hope that you feel I listened to you, served you, educated you, and worked hard for you. I was often thanked for the long hours I might spend on a phone call, or the speed at which I returned an email, or the attentiveness I gave a situation. This is my opportunity to thank you for staying on that long fall call with, long, long phone call with me and listening to what I had to say, for sending me the email with your questions and trusting me to provide you answers, and lastly, to embrace me as your county planner and allow me to be part of forging the future of this community. I hope I have set a standard for whoever follows me that is hard to meet, and I hope that is filled by someone who not only meets it but exceeds it. As I leave the service of Edgefield County, I become simply a resident of Edgefield County, and that is simply a great thing to be. Well, one more group to thank. The fourth group of people I would like to thank, and thank most of all, are my coworkers. Doc, Jenny, Fran, Tim, and Randy. Edgefield County Building and Planning and all those in our office are the best group of people I've ever worked with. When we, I was not just being emotional. When we faced each workday, we did it a certain way. We did it with a team approach, counting on each other to carry our own weight, but knowing we could rely on each other when we need it. We did it with a sense of service, to do the best we could for the county. We did it while having fun and making sure that we never dreaded coming to the office, at least not because of each other. And we did it as friends, which we are and will continue to be. Edgefield County is lucky to have you, and I've been more than lucky to work with you. Thank you for being the best coworkers I've ever had, and for being good friends.
Motion to deny a letter? Motion to deny.
Well, that would be, that would be fair, uh. Kevin, we appreciate you, and I know we had a good relationship. And I can say, parting is never easy, but it come a time when we have to part. And, uh, being a young man, I wish him success, cause I, you know, I'm an old man, and I can't go back. But he, when he young, when you're young, you need to, I know we love dying out, but we need to prosper, cause he got a family I'll take care of, and, and parting is never easy, but it come a time when we have to part. But we're gonna miss you. And, uh, and we want you to keep in touch with us. I know the whole planning commission and the county as well, you done a great job. I don't have not one complaint, myself, I don't know about the rest, but we really appreciate you and wish you luck. And, uh, as I can say, I got my stepson, he building a house, like, that way he going to that county, so, city, where we at. So, uh, I appreciate it, have somebody to look out for you. Thank you.
I appreciate all your hard.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate all your hard work. It's evident that, you know, you're kind of the glue that's been keeping this process together, so.
Exactly.
We appreciate everything you've done, really, Kevin, best of luck.
Yeah. Come here, man.
He said you're ready to jerk.
Yeah, okay, the motion to adjourn. Motion seconded with John, all in favor? With John, appreciate everybody coming.